So you almost have until our public hearings.
Yeah.
If that's what we're going.
Four calendar days.
That's what I don't know.
It's work on calendars.
Yeah, so whenever, I think we have plenty of time.
Yeah. I think.
Well, I'm saying that.
Yeah.
We always have, and we do it the same schedule every year or so.
Yeah. I'll look at the time frame that we've done at the last.
Yeah, Cory's planning on coming over for us, so, okay.
Perfect.
Well, let's let him know maybe support this schedule.
Okay. I can coordinate with him too, just to make sure. Yeah.
He'll be the one doing it.
Okay, perfect.
Okay, so I'll tell everybody up north, go to your basement, interior room, hunker down.
National Weather Service.
Yeah, that's what they said. Yeah, that's what they said on the National Weather Service thing. When they said, go to an interior basement room, I'm like, we are not in the southeast. What are you talking about? Are you sure you got the right radio station?
It's definitely not getting me at the tornado.
It was more like ninety-nine or.
Ninety-nine?
Yeah, I can tell you exactly where I was at back then. Kirsten drove right through the center of the eye, even though. She got to the hospital and to work and they had, they were in an emergency. She's like, what's going on? Well, there was a tornado, people are hurt, blah, blah, blah. Yeah, she saw stuff flying around and she was on North Temple and drove right through.
August eleventh of ninety-nine.
Is that what it was? Yeah. That's at the neighbor's house when I went through. How about that little wormhole they had the other day? Did you see that? Yeah. But I called up north and they're like, yes, buddy, but it's not bad. They're not going to their basement rooms.
Not quite that scared.
No. There's still blue skies. Hey, we'd like to welcome everyone today and call to order the study session of the West Valley City Council. It is June sixth, twenty twenty-three, and it is four thirty P M. We are in the multipurpose room of West Valley City Hall. We will excuse Councilman. Jitsi Umanu and Councilman Hoon. And we have Councilman Krishison online with us. And at the table, we have. Councilman Hoon just walked in. We have Councilman Norfelt, Councilman Whitstone, Councilman Hardman, and myself. We're also joined at the table with our city manager, Mr. Pyle, and our city reporter, Ms. Kamic. We will go to the May twenty-third, twenty twenty-three minutes, turn it to the council for discussion or a motion.
Motion to approve second.
Thank you. A motion in a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And those stand approved.
Aye.
Thank you. And Jake just joined us online. Okay, we now have our meetings for tonight. Are there any changes or any questions from the council?
No changes, ma'am, other than we did re-add the two items of unfinished business, capital projects list and the C T A A. Questions and nothing has changed within the items, but, but they are re-added, so.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Any questions from the council on any of the meetings tonight? Okay, seeing none, we'll move over to our first ordinance. I'll turn the time over to Mr. Bunderson for ordinance twenty-three dash nineteen.
Thank you, Mayor. Counsel Eric Bunderson. Ready?
Ready.
Be ready. This ordinance is proposed to change our public comment period from five minutes and thirty minutes total every month, or sorry, every time we have a meeting to once a month and three minutes each still for thirty minutes. Um, this is a, uh. Oh, and then in addition to that, the ordinance also adds a little bit to the preamble that was already in the ordinance, which um, has the mayor instructing would be public speakers to direct all comments to the mayor and to avoid personal attacks in order to maintain the civility that we cherish here in our meetings in West Valley City. Um, the, uh, the change from every week to once a month is legal. Uh, city doesn't even have to have any kind of a public comic period for general comments if we don't want some entities do like special, special, uh, um, districts and things like that, but cities don't have to do anything. So, um, this is a, this is a proposed change that is, uh, that's passed the legal test and, um, here to answer any questions if you have any.
Okay, any questions from the council?
There be any compelling reason why we would, um, on the fly, open it up for public comment? If we have like a group of high schoolers that wanted to get public comment, maybe had an assignment, they needed to get public comment and only have one opportunity a month and they didn't make it.
Um, I, I think the, uh, the council could, uh, probably suspend their normal procedure and rules, uh, with a majority vote under, that's probably be an analysis under Roberts rules or something like that. Um. Yeah, I, I think you could probably do that. We'd probably encourage sticking with the schedule as much as we could because that's what the ordinance says.
I think when you make an allowance for one, you're kind of making an allowance for everybody. So it's gonna have to be one way or the other. I don't think there's a, oh, sorry. I was just gonna say, I don't know that there's a good way of capping off what it would be and not be.
Yeah, well, it'd be if we had a majority voting that we could do that, that would, yeah, you cap it, I think.
I was gonna ask Eric and Nicole just for their memory on, uh, how's proper pass procedure on special recognitions? Maybe that's another way to handle that question.
Yeah, you could have the, um, the, this, you still have the special recognition section on every.
And it's on each agenda, right? And you're gonna do use that to recognize individuals from time to time. So you probably could do that the same.
We can invite them up to comment if. Okay.
Yeah, because generally when we recognize someone, they still wait for public comment to speak.
We could.
Like Ms. Harrison did.
Yeah.
Just wait for that time. They don't speak when we recognize them.
And we could, like, like Lars mentioned with the scout group, so we could just say, if you want to come up and just introduce your group and what you're representing, we could do something like that.
Okay, but take no comment. Just say why they're there.
Think so.
Okay. With that, I'm just not as much with making exceptions. So in something I read, and I may have totally misunderstood what you said, but was there a note in there saying we can put a time limit on public hearings?
Yeah.
So we could cap those at three or five and not have twenty-minute dissertations.
You could, you could. Yeah, absolutely. Um, and the, the way that we would recommend you doing that is, um, on a, on a hearing by hearing basis. So if you get to the tax hearing in August and there's four hundred people from here to here, then, um, as long as you keep it fair and you say you got thirty seconds each and we're gonna cap it at a hundred people or something like that. Um, that's okay. If you've only got three people at a hearing, um, it's probably good to give that a little more time. And that's perfectly allowable. So the, the best way to do it is to just kind of get a feel for what is happening at that particular public meeting and then give some kind of fair overarching, um, time limit on it.
Okay.
We would do that on the fly in the agenda in your comments.
Yeah.
Yeah.
See, I'm almost thinking I'd rather go five minutes and then cut it down if we have two hundred people sitting here.
Mayor?
Because most end up repeating, yes, sir.
Uh, I know at one tax hearing or something in the past, um, when Mayor Winder was in, uh, it was full and he asked after the first one spoke, he said, how many here? If you come up and speak are gonna say basically the same thing? And they raised their hands and he said, okay, that's duly noted that that many are either opposed or for, I forget what it was, but he, he had them raise their hand and it took a lot less time.
Yeah, but I, I know some of those I've attended. We've still been here until ten o'clock at night, ten thirty. And everybody still stands up and repeats the exact same thing. So instead of them all standing up.
At that point, you know. Yeah. I don't know, but that's how it's, at, at least one time was handled in the past.
Right. It's been like that numerous times, especially when we were building the cultural center and then when we wanted to wait in thirty-one and then we've had a lot of really long meetings.
Chicken night.
Nights are always fun. Now, there's no, yeah. So I would just like, like a set rule, but if nobody cares how long it goes on, I'm good with letting them speak as long as they want.
So I assume this would go into effect after the vote next week.
Yep. And you did see, I, I think I mentioned that I, the way that I wrote it, it's the first actual meeting we have. So if they've, if for whatever reason, first meeting is skipped, it will be the second meeting. It's the first time we hold a meeting for the month.
Right, because August were, they were night out and then November, a general election.
Yep. Yeah. And we just wanted to be sure that there was a chance every month.
Okay.
And I did reach out, so we're able to, um, put that. So when people go to the website, they'll be able to see what public comment meetings there are. Um, so I should be able to get that as well.
Okay, so when we go into agendas and meetings, it will say public hearing or no public.
Public comment meeting, yeah.
Okay, can you put no public comment on the others just so there's not?
Yeah.
Any confusion?
Yep, I can do that.
Okay. Because if we're gonna do it, it needs to be as clear as.
Clear.
A clarifying question, please, uh, Madam Mayor.
Yes.
What was, what was the preferred time limit that, um, you're suggesting or you had in mind for the public hearing piece if we were to admit that?
Five minutes.
Per person?
Yes.
Thirty total.
Oh, I, I don't think we need a total on that one on our public hearing because there might be two hundred people. But if we put the five minutes and then take who needs, wants to speak was what I was thinking.
And then we would consider the overall length, uh, and or cutting folks off if, um, if we were, it was deemed to be excessively long or something like that. I'm, I'm not opposed to that. I'm actually okay with that. Yeah, with what you're proposing there, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Okay. So make that a future?
We, yeah, I'm almost thinking you could just put that into practice at the next public hearing.
So this one need to be a resolution, but the next one does not need to be?
Yeah, that's what I'm thinking. Let.
Do research.
Let me do a little research on that, but right off the cuff, I'm thinking because the public hearing has to happen anyway on his own changing or whatever. Um, if the council just wanted to put into practice at the beginning of that public hearing, we're gonna do five minutes. And, um, we could set the timer and then you could enforce that. You wouldn't really need to do an ordinance. And then you could change it if there were four hundred people here and you wanted to reduce it to thirty seconds without having to change an ordinance. Might be a better way to.
Well, in the ordinance, we could put or extreme circumstances down to one minute or something.
Yeah, yeah.
All right, why don't you research and think about it and then we'll talk about it.
Okay.
Let's bring it back as a communication.
Okay.
And then maybe move forward with it. But I think just for consistency, I'd rather both be ordinances written down, something. Okay. Are you the next one? Nope.
Hey, I hope not.
Hey.
Thanks.
Thank you. All right, we'll now go to our resolutions and Chief Evans has a couple, so we'll start with resolution twenty-three dash eighty and we'll turn the time to him. Any stretchers? Maybe a new ambulance.
Thank you. So I can do the ambulance first because if you don't like that, there's no sense buying a stretcher.
Okay. Twenty-three eighty-one it is.
Hey, everyone, sorry about that.
That's okay.
Um, what we're asking for in, in the ambulance fund is we buy a new box uh, for an ambulance. This will replace a two thousand and eight ambulance. Um, the box itself is fifteen years old. Uh, so if we put, uh, if we get a new ambulance, that other ambulance would go down as a reserve ambulance. Uh, so we, we have looked at this. We, we have the chassis that we can send back to Frazier. We also looked at another, uh, vendor, uh, A E V. They were about twenty-seven thousand dollars more. So we're sticking with, with the Frazier ambulance.
Okay.
Is there any questions on that? Uh, also, this, the two thousand and eight ambulance. In fifteen years, uh, the medical service has changed. We are buying what now is a, a larger box uh, with everything we have to do inside the ambulances. So our fleet's going to these larger boxes.
So the chassis you're putting in this on, is it a brand new one?
It's a brand new one that we have. We were gonna remount, but the problem we have now is like with fire trucks and everything else, this ambulance could be a year out. Uh, just, just to build the box itself. If we didn't have a chassis, you're looking at somewhere two to two and a half years to get an ambulance.
Hey, any questions from the council?
The next one is the stretcher that would go into it. The reason we do this is we can actually buy the stretcher itself cheaper than the manufacturer will charge us. So what we do is we buy the stretcher. We just send the mounting to the ambulance manufacturer. They mount it, but it just saves us. Um, I'm thinking in a neighborhood between seven and ten thousand dollars if we buy it ourselves and just ship the, the, the hardware to them. So that's why we do that separate.
Okay, that's smart.
And both of these come out of the ambulance fund.
Okay. Any questions from the council? So is this stretcher one that self-lifts and puts it by itself pretty much?
Well, it don't, it self-lifts. We, we saved a lot of back injuries. It, basically the stretcher, you load it in and it starts pulling it in and you just guide in the wheels.
Sweet. Much easier for the employees. Okay, well, doesn't look like any other questions.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we'll now turn the time to Mr. Johnson. Talk about a public way lease agreement.
Good afternoon. This, this is an agreement with the Utah Transit Authority. Um, they are working on a bus rapid transit line that'll go from the, the Murray Central Front Runner Track Station to the West Valley Bus Hub and Transit Hub here, uh, just west of City Hall. And, um, this agreement kind of formalizes and finalizes things that the city's already agreed to in a memorandum agreement that was executed in twenty twenty-one. Um, but what it essentially does is it gives U T A the right to construct a and operate this bus rapid transit line, um, and they'll build stations on, uh, twenty-seven hundred west. And then they'll expand their bus hub into the city-owned property, uh, that we will lease to them, um, a portion, roughly a third of that lot, that the America First parking lot and, um, for them to expand their, their bus hub. And, um, so those are the things that we generally agree to do and, and they agree to build a, um, they're gonna build a, a power transformer that will actually have access to for building electric vehicle charging stations in our parking lot. And we'll work with Rocky Mountain Power to install those at no cost, um, once, once the transformer's in. And so uh, they also agree to, um, they're gonna build some drainage improvements and they'll, they'll basically build the, the landscaping, uh, between them and us and tie in the asphalt, um, in our parking lot that they'll remove. And then, um, they'll also build, uh, a portion of an, uh, uh, an eight-foot concrete, uh, wall on twenty-seventh West from forty-one hundred South to West Shire Drive, which is that first road, uh, going north from forty-one hundred south. And, um, so they'll pay for a portion of that and then we'll pay for the rest of it. And, and with this resolution comes the the council's authorization of, uh, six hundred thousand dollars for that fence um, that we would intend to continue with, with the council's authorization, that we would intend to continue further north on that east side of twenty-seven hundred west um, to match the fence. It's on the west side of twenty-seven hundred west. And, um, and, and it would be our intent that that six hundred thousand dollars would get us to the church where, where the, the backyard fencing ends. So that is my report and I'll take any questions if there are any.
Any questions? Hey, doesn't look like it. Thank you. All right, we'll now go to our unfinished business. Um, application Z T three, twenty twenty-three. We'll turn the time over to Mr. Pastrick.
Thank you, Mayor. So I'll just, uh, provide a brief, uh, review. This was an item that we discussed at our uh, previous, uh, regular meeting as well as study meeting. So the, the request here, um, from Hustler Hollywood is to to remove, uh, any reference to the term lingerie store in the zoning ordinance. And the effect of that would be that um, those, those types of stores would be considered just like essentially a, a retail store. It would be the, the effect of, of that change. One question I know that did come up, uh, in the, the regular meeting, uh, or last regular meeting was the discussion about some of the displays that are occurring. I think at Adam and Eve was a, a concern was raised, and so I wanted to just touch on that briefly. So, uh, we do have the ability, uh, similar to signage to regulate, uh, what we call time, place, and manner. So thinking about that from a signage perspective, just to give you an idea, an example would be, um, you know, you, if you have a sign, you know, the lights have to be off after midnight, for example, or place could be, it has to be ten feet off the road. Uh, manner could be things like we regulate whether it's a ten feet tall or a monument sign or a pole sign, those kinds of things. Uh, what we can't do when it comes to signage or in this case, uh, display is regulate content. Um, unless it's considered actually obscene. And, and in our view, the uh, as we look at this, as I've talked with legal, the, the, the displays there wouldn't rise to the level of being considered obscene. So, uh, hopefully that helps provide some context on the issue of the display windows. And I know the, the council did, uh, continue this because you wanted to have some more discussion around the application. So happy to answer any questions. I thought it would just be helpful to provide that, uh, that a little bit additional information there.
Okay. So I'll turn it to the council. Any questions?
Uh, Steve, last meeting, uh, regular meeting, also someone, uh, they brought, actually, I think he, he brought it up about, uh, the store across from Rancho High School, but what is that? Can you elaborate a little bit?
Sure. I, I believe the store they're referring to is the Adam, Adam and Eve store. So it's the address there is thirty-four, forty-three west, thirty-fifth south. And so, um, in that case, the, the property is, is zone C two, which is commercial zoning and and so the, um, it, that, that use was allowed in that particular zone. There were no, no prohibitions on the use.
And this one another C two?
So the difference with the one in, uh, that's over by the Maverick Center or along Decer Lake Drive is it's, it's within an overlay zone, whereas the thirty-fifth south is not within an overlay zone.
And is the one by the Mavericks to center there legally?
Correct. What they, uh, what they opted to do in order to open is to not sell lingerie. And so, so they're meeting, they're meeting the definition or, or basically not falling into that category currently. But they're requesting to change the code so they can sell lingerie.
So is there any limit of the percentage of lingerie they can sell, the ones that are restricted?
So in the, um, in the ordinance right now, the, the ord, the definition as written is that the floor area is limited to five percent, but it's the, it's the combination of any adult items and lingerie. Those two together can't exceed five percent under the current definition.
Of a of a retail store?
Of retail store correctly. That's correct.
So Adam and Eve is not over the five percent?
Well, and in the.
Or is that C two, you can get away? It doesn't have a percentage?
So what, what happens is they can, um, and, and sorry if I'm, um, jumbling this up here. So what, what makes a use of lingerie stores if they have over five percent of their floor area? Okay, so, so if they're under that, they're not considered. So take for example, a, let's say a Walmart that sells, may sell some adult items in lingerie, but it's a very small percentage. That's just a retail store. Once they get over five percent, it's considered, uh, a lingerie store, which again, in, in just the C two zone is still a, is a permitted use.
Okay.
Unless, um, again, sorry for all the nuance with the overlay zone. That's where there's the prohibition on a lingerie store.
So the Adam and Eve can only have five percent?
They can have, they can have up to fifteen percent of, of the, and, and again, this is where it gets a little bit tricky. The, you have two ordinances that are at play here. Um, you have our sexually oriented business ordinance that does not address lingerie at all. That is just adult items can be up to fifteen percent. And that, and it's, that, uh, does not have any reference to lingerie. It's just adult items would be up to fifteen percent. At, at the point at which you add lingerie, that's where it becomes by definition a lingerie store. And again, you can have up to fifteen percent, but, but the, but the fifteen percent is again not doesn't put the limitation on the lingerie. It puts the limitation on the adult items, if that makes sense. So it's, it's the addition of lingerie that then makes it a lingerie store, but the, it's not the lingerie uh, square footage that's being limited. It's the adult items that's being limited.
So right now, the one by the Maverick Center has unlimited adult?
So they're.
They only have fifteen percent?
They have fifteen percent adult and no lingerie items. So they're, they're, um, you're doing that so they don't become a lingerie store by de, by our definition. So. Hopefully that, hopefully that's clear. I can try, just try to explain it again, but.
So if we change this ordinance, is that gonna allow them to do lingerie and adult items? Is that
That's.
purpose of it? And it's now they're not capped fifty percent. They can, they can exceed that because they can now do lingerie beyond the fifteen percent.
They can, their adult items would stay capped at fifteen percent, but now they can have lingerie and, and the percentage of lingerie would not be restricted.
So they could have eighty-five percent lingerie?
Correct.
Okay. I don't like that.
Yeah, go ahead.
Is it possible to change that or remove one, the definition of lingerie and just stick to sexually oriented businesses that, and then define that as a certain percentage of novelties and lingerie? Or are we just replacing lingerie with another term?
So our, our concern with, with, um, admitting our, uh, sexually oriented business ordinance, or we could refer to S O B ordinance is that's, that's been in place since, um, by my research, the early nineties. It's been, it's been very effective at, um, regulating. In fact, we, to, to, uh, by my research, we don't actually have any licensed S O Bs in the city right now. We have very stringent regulations as far as the placement of those, like where they can be. It's, it's very limited as far as where those can go.
They can only be in manufacturing and what else?
Right. So, so if you look at, uh, and this is in our in our zoning ordinance, I'll, I'll hit on, try to hit on the high points here. So they have to be a thousand feet from me, school, park, library, or church. So they have to be a thousand feet from me, school, park, library or church. Um. They have to be six hundred feet from any, uh, high image arterial street. Uh, a thousand feet from any residential zone or use. Uh, six hundred feet from the other SOBs. And then, let's see. So those, just going through, oh, and then yes, there, there's also, they had, they're only permitted in the manufacturing zone. And they have to be designated for heavy industrial in the general plan. So by the time you add all those up, there's like. Very, like two very, very small areas that are out in the kind of far southwest part of the city. So it, it's very limiting. So that, our, our concern would be that we, we have this ordinance that's been in place for a long time. It's been effective. If we. If we modify that, we just worry about perhaps that may, uh, we may lose some ground in, in, in that particular section of the code.
And these are not considered SOBs.
Correct.
What are their formal? What are they called? This kind of a business?
So, so cur- currently there were, there would be considered lingerie store because of that, the mix of the adult items and lingerie. Um, but, uh, if this change is approved, it would just be a retail store. So just like, you know, whether it's a shoe store or anything else.
So they could put one of these anywhere. If they're just a retail store, if we change the text. Put a retail store in any commercial spot.
And, and a, a commercial area, that's right.
And any overlay zone.
And well, in, in case of the overlay zone, that generally is adding restrictions. And so it, it would just no longer have that added restriction in the overlay zone. Cause right, right now they can be, a lingerie store is allowed in any C two zone right now. The only place where they're prohibited in C twos, if you have an overlay zone that's prohibiting it. So that's why, for example, again, with the Adam and Eve example, it's C two zoning. Uh, they can be there because there's no, uh, overlay restricting that.
Anything else?
Clearly regarding that, um. Text change, but I guess just bringing back up, uh, concern around the displays. So given that these are. Uh, are there any other restrictions for any? Other kind of retail in terms of what can, uh, or can be displayed. Uh, outside, or would that be a specific consideration for these kinds of oriented businesses? Um, if, um, there is that concern about appropriateness or being close to schools or walking distance or something like that.
So we, we do have regulations on things where, for example, if a, a tire store wants to have tires displayed outside. We have some, uh, limitations on that. But as far as window displays, if, if it's not actually signage, right? So we do definitely have regulations that. That regulate, if you have, for example, window or signs that people place in windows, we have regulations that, that, uh, would limit. The percentage of the windows that are covered. But when it comes to what's actually displayed in the display window, we do not have regulations. Does that help answer the question?
Yeah, it does, sorry.
And so we can see your lips moving. But we couldn't hear you. Any other questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Communications, does anyone have any concerns with the council calendar? No, okay. Potential future agenda items? Did anybody have anything?
Yeah, I have one, Mayor. Um, maybe, uh. Steve Patrick, maybe in the future, maybe just bring it up about. One concern I have is one, uh, father and he has multiple homes here in Westside City and he. Um, have his son out and basically to live there. And, um, maybe a year or so, and then whenever he. Uh, have, you know, he had job and he can take over his mortgage, well, the father mortgage. But, uh, our city, we put that installation as a rental property and we asked the father to. To pay for the landlord, what's it called? Rental. Yeah, business license, yeah. So I maybe take a look at that one because, uh, that's running too, I don't. I don't think there's a one case, but multiple case and in the future. So I want to take a look at that one, see how we can fix that.
So if it's relative to a relative, you're not charging rent? Or does he charge rent?
Uh, you know, you're not judging and he have, uh, his son, um, and maybe the daughter doing it in the future, you know, the daughter have, uh, the. New marriage, basically just, they just start, I don't know, but I think it started, um, recently and they tried to find job and try to do thing and. And they can take over the father mortgage, uh, but, uh, we try them for them, ask them for the business license.
Okay. So whoever's over that, can I give an explanation on the future?
Yeah.
Communication?
We could, you know, of course, I'd like to have the, the council give direction, but if you want just like a written communication or we send an explanation. Oh, yeah, we could do that.
We just, uh.
Communication item?
That would be my only other question. We actually did look into this a little while ago, cause Scott had a question and. The ordinance itself that requires that. If the council wanted to do, it wouldn't really be hard to change. There's a certain number. Of criteria that, that goes into that definition of what it is. And you could alter it pretty slightly to change that situation. So. Council wants to do that.
Like to look at those crit- criteria. Study that and, and to see if anyone.
Okay. So bring it back. Sounds like there's plenty that want to look at that. So let's look at that one. Anything else?
Um, and I. I mentioned it last week, I'm just going to mention it again, and I sent the email for. A schedule of all the. That instruments that we have as a city. So hopefully we have four that are willing to.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, we had four before. Yeah, yeah, I had said. And, uh, Jim has been working on that. Getting that together.
Perfect.
And I've seen a draft of that. We should have that up pretty quick. Yeah, that was asked for a couple of weeks ago when we were. We had the instruction then and we thought.
Maybe like, give, uh, us maybe three or four options when.
Three or four options for what?
Yeah, what Scott's asking for?
Scott's asking for maybe options to pay it off.
Oh, well, I think that's something we can.
It's just the payment schedule, yeah.
Yep, the options. What they are.
Yeah.
Right now. As, as had been previously decided. There would be other things we could do. Yeah, Scott's. Correct. I mean, there are always other things that are possible for addressing project, but. But, uh, best. Well, anyway, yeah, we'll bring the schedule and whatever's needs.
Okay. Anyone else? You ever want to time?
Oh, I had one.
Okay.
So, um. Nicole had sent out some information requesting feedback on the float. Like scheduled. And so I just wanted to bring it up here, see what everybody wanted to do.
How was that? Going to happen? Are we on the float or are we walking next to it or?
Well, you, you could talk about and decide that too. I think we had a plan in place for that. My question was more around schedule. How many do you want to go to? I think we're scheduled currently for who?
Is that an email or?
It was an email, yeah. I can see.
May have had some.
May twenty.
To do some other ones or maybe not, I don't know. So I wanted to bring it up.
Do we have scheduled our?
Ours and.
And the day of the forty seven.
And then there was just a calendar list of other options, not that we have to enter in all of them, but.
Right. South Jordan's, well, first off, when is the float going to be ready? Will it be ready by June third, which has already come and gone?
He's online, I can't.
Already come and gone, so we don't worry about South Jordan. So I'm pretty sure that it'll be ready for the West Fest, which is the next one. So.
Yeah, for sure, it'll be right for that.
And then it's whether or not you want to do any of the others. Last year we did West Fest, Magna. And the days of forty seven, correct? Just those three. There's space for two people on the float, as I understand it. So, anybody that wants to do that?
Good with two.
You give it to?
But.
The Magna one.
Yeah, it doesn't hurt being Magna. We have a lot of West Hollywood people that go to the Magna parade. But whoever goes to the days of forty seven, you have to be there at seven thirty for the judging. You get docked if one person's not there. Are you? You're not going to be on the float then?
Yeah, I'm all sweaty when I get the float.
Will you be done by seven thirty?
I don't, hmm, it depends on how fast I run.
So anybody else have an objection? Or is two, funny? Or three, Magna, I forgot. So we should.
You know, w- we have the. The float, it'd be nice to be in more, but, but then we have to. To get it there and we have to have people driving it. It's. It's just not to driving, you get like people all the way around.
Although we did, we did have, as I'm told, plenty of. Volunteers for overtime and that sort of thing. So I, I was a little afraid, afraid starting back up again. We were going to have a hard time staffing it. At least with the three last year that were done, we didn't have a hard time getting them, so.
Well, the only one that was kind of a pain is the days of forty seven, cause you have to get it there, kind of in the middle of the night and then you have to sit with it. But the others, it seemed like we just drove out when it was time. There was no overnight stays. So that seems to be the only cumbersome one.
Sam raised a hand. I'm not sure if you had a comment.
Sorry, can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
Okay, I think the, um, we are up to do whatever floats. We're working with public works. I think the only challenge with. The schedule that we did last year was we did the Magna one, which is a terrific one. We were the only actual float in Magna. And the time of day in Magna was just the other challenge, cause it is, as you would guess, it is very hot.
No.
There are two other parades at that same time that are larger parades that have more floats in it. So that would just be a matter, if you did want to do one on that July fourth. It's a matter of if you want kind of a smaller parade kind of behind us in Magna, or if you want one of the larger parades like Murray. Um, like one of those. So that'd be my only comment on that.
Okay, thank you. That's a good insight. Well, and where there's three, probably historically on the same day. We can maybe rotate through those three. Do a different one every year. That might give us, spread us out. So.
So, uh, Murray, Magna, when, where's?
Well, if we don't do, instead of Magna, you could do Murray or West Jordan. On that same day.
I, I know Murray is a very large attendance on their parade, as I've seen in the past.
Okay.
West Jordan has a lot too. Yeah.
So maybe you get West Jordan this time and maybe next year. Right.
What's the, hey, so our. Who would like to go with, is West Jordan a good choice? Yes, 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 yes. Sure. Okay, let's do West Jordan and then. Murray next year and then Magna again. That work?
You feel West Fest and forty.
West Fest and the forty sevens and then just add West Jordan. Is three manageable? Sam, again this year, if we do those three?
Uh, yes, we can, uh, definitely do that.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Now the signup sheet of who wants to do which ones. Anybody in the mood for being on a float? Oh, and is there any? Attire recommendations for the people on the float?
Uh, not for this one. I think, uh, we have two spots as been mentioned, um. But I think something that you would feel comfortable being filmed in, but otherwise it's, it's going to be probably a fairly hot day on all three of those days. So. Whatever you're most comfortable with, but. When we know who's doing it, we can also get in touch to give you some more ideas on what you could wear.
For the theme, okay.
Yep.
Okay. So is there anyone else interested in being on the float? Mom, you want to be on the float?
I don't have a cowboy hat.
You don't have to do that this year. There's no dress requirements.
I want a hat.
Yeah, you'll definitely want a hat.
Scott.
Hey, do you mind just sending out an email and letting them sign up for what they want? Then if nobody signs up, we'll just.
It default. It can operate without riders too. It's designed in as such that it will be fine.
Fine without any riders?
Any riders, so no one wants to.
Okay.
If you have too many, is it okay just to walk?
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay.
Okay.
That's real candy.
Okay.
All right. My only potential future agenda item was, um. The new legisla- the legislature has put new restrict or. Recommendations for the water ordinance, saying we need somebody. We need a water plan in our general plan.
Okay.
So are we working on that?
Uh, I would.
Cause it affects the zoning as well. I mean, the water rebates.
We're aware of that. So the, the plan is to incorporate that into.
Into the general plan update that we're working on currently anyway.
And who are we looking at to have the person that's going to be our water specialist?
Yeah, having identified they are.
Okay. I'm sure Greg, you're going to have somebody that will volunteer. Since we help them out a lot.
Awesome.
Okay. Well, cause, yeah, they have the purchasing of the water authority and such. Okay.
Just one other thing, Mayor. Had a call from a citizen. Yesterday about fireworks coming up in the fireworks season. Maybe just a refresher of. Noise ordinance and. Do we get our fireworks rules from the county or is it the state or, you know?
Mostly regulated by the state, but there probably is some variation. You want to speak to that, John? John's well versed on the changes year to year and the.
The fire.
Commands and right, or is. They really don't change it. Uh, you can light pretty much what you want. Uh, we, we do get, um. Our restrictions from the state, the state sets the time, uh, the dates that you can, can do them. Uh, they've. Uh, I, I believe it was last year, they lessened the hours. Uh. Previous to the fourth or the twenty fourth, fourth and the twenty fourth, the hours are actually longer. As far as being able to restrict them. Uh, your hands are, are kind of tied. Our restrictions right now, they look at urban area interfaces. Our restrictions are along the Jordan River. And west of U one eleven, because we have a mountainside going up U one eleven. So that's where West Valley. Has asked to have those restrictions. We also restrict them in city parks. Uh, but that's, that's pretty much, uh. There, there have been, I'm sure you've seen in the media cities that have tried to restrict them everywhere. And that doesn't work out for them real well in the legislature.
I know.
We have no say.
So I, I can, you know, I, um. On our website, we will put the, the days, obviously you can, it's, uh. Uh, three days before the day of, a couple of days after. Fourth, twenty fourth, um. You can light them on New Year's Eve. Believe that's the only other one.
So did you say they lessen the amount of hours you can put them off on?
Yeah, I mean, it used to be, I, I think, uh, yeah, it goes till midnight now on the fourth.
Okay, but the other, the before and afters.
Before and after, uh, it's eleven o'clock.
Okay.
So, I mean, you, you get complaints. I mean, we get complaints.
Yeah.
Light and fireworks. They have not come to me to ask me what I think of it, so.
I mean, and I, I told the citizen, we could ban them and it's not going to stop them. We're still going to have fireworks all over them, so.
Yeah, and we just end up basically responding where and how fast we can all through the season. That's basically how it works, that's right.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
All right, council reports?
I just have one.
Okay. Oh, hang on just one sec, Jake.
Go ahead, Will.
Uh, just on, I we discussed this last year, but that the deer population along Mountain View.
Uh huh.
Take another look at that and just have it as a. It's still an issue if there's. Um, maybe if there's. Data on. If we can get on Mountain View or. Is that something we can discuss in the future agenda item?
Sure, just how many deer are crossing Mountain View?
An issue with. Being hit and causing issues on Mountain View.
Okay. Do you have somebody that can put that report together?
I'm sure we can.
Okay.
That's the same question. This is just for form. I mean, I'm assuming or we want to just like be clear, but. Yeah, absolutely, we can do that.
Okay. You good with that?
I'm I'm not sure what what we're studying. I mean. What would we do with that information?
Well, if there's, I I think last year we considered. Possibly having those. Removed or.
Well, we can, we looked at exterminating them within the city. But that didn't look like it didn't go through the council saying, yes, there's four of us that want to move forward with that. So it would be putting together a program. With DWR, but a resident within the city would have to, or a person. Assigned by the city would have to euthanize them. Trap them and euthanize them.
I'm just wondering if it's still an issue, if that's something we could explore.
Yeah, I'm sure they're still in the inner city. It's just whether or not. Maybe we just need to review the DWR. Um, solution again. And then. Decide if you want to take that and put it into policy or not. Last time there wasn't an appetite for it.
Maybe just the. You can look back on it, Jin is Nicole.
Yeah.
But when it was, and we can just review. The DWR part of the study.
Were you guys here yet?
Yeah.
Okay. You were here.
I remembered, we talked about it. I just couldn't remember what the conversation really centered around. Now it's kind of coming back.
Right, so the DWR gentleman came.
Yeah.
He did a test and so we knew what it didn't tell. So.
And if I, and my memory might be wrong here, but it seems like what the hang up may have been was just, it seemed like. What the requirements were. Seemed like they were not necessarily viable, that we would be able to accomplish. Again, that's just my memory. I didn't even remember at first if the guy even came, but we could go back and. Pick it up. Sure, I mean, just to get the information.
Send us the link.
What the?
We could watch it.
Yeah.
At ten minutes again.
Yeah, I think.
From there.
Yeah, it was, you know. I think we had a member of the. A resident that was willing to do it. It was just the liability and different things. That it didn't move forward, so. But yeah, I have, I mean, you want to readdress that. I don't think the traffic study is as much of a. Necessity as the ones trapped in yards. East of the, well, or west. Because Mountain View. Is to the east of the one really problematic area. So I don't know that the Mountain View study would do you much good.
Okay.
Because those, the addresses I know about were west of that.
And that's where I've, I mean, I've had it on my dash cam of.
Yeah.
Huge buck running in front of my wife's car.
On Mountain View?
No, in the neighborhood, just west of Mountain View.
Yeah. That's where they're really populated. Yep, it's just the city taking on the liability and finding a resident. Willing to do that. Or an officer, we could have an officer, they said. I believe.
I think that was, or there was some question about that too.
Yeah.
Not from the DNR peoples.
Yeah. Yeah. So. Hey. So we'll bring that back. Or just send them the link and then if we want to bring it back, we can. Now that they watch it. Anything else? Jake had something?
Yeah, mine's, it's not anything new. It's something that comes up uh periodically, but I think we've all got a couple of emails recently. Um, and so I'm just asking for a maybe a refresher if anyone else is interested in regards to uh our. Regulations around what constitutes um. Uh, what am I trying to say? Uh, like boarding houses, right? Or um folks who are. Um, may potentially be uh flipping homes and or renovating single family homes into. Um, I guess what what we could call boarding houses or uh rental units uh that are not. Um, necessarily approved or uh compliant with laws. And so um besides just defining that, um. Maybe. Um, some additional information, uh just to jog memory on. How we actually enforce that, because I think some of these um complaints, you know, I I think they're all suspicions, right? Unless we've actually walked into somebody's home uh and noticed that there are five bathrooms or something like that in there. Um, we're kind of guessing based on how many people or cars are parked outside or people coming in and out, that type of thing. So. Um, like. The question is maybe, and this might just be a commu- um, an email or a communication rather than a a formal agenda item, but just um. Our rules around those kinds of uh developments. Um, and then what? What recourse we have to actually investigate. Some property if these kinds of suspicions arise.
Okay. So does anybody else have? Interested in having that presented?
That's a, that's a big issue.
Yes.
I think I'll hear a lot about.
Okay, so can we put that together?
Yes.
Next week.
How would we like to do it? Email communication?
I'd rather have a discussion here.
Okay, communication, all right.
Yeah, I think on the communication agenda. Hey, anything else? All right, now council reports.
Memorial Day event was great. There's Lieutenant Brenton's comments.
Thank you. Yeah, I thought the staff put on a really good program. So. We need to figure out how to get more people to come, but Memorial Days are pretty busy, so I think you're just happy with what you get. But it was really nicely done. We just need to cancel the rate or the win next time. Hey. Yep.
Um, I, along with the. Casp and Whitestone and you. Uh, all attended the crossing guard dinner, which was very well attended. I think. Said they had each of their crossing guards there for one of the first times. And so uh, just that was well done by the the police staff. Kudos to. To them.
Yes, thank you. That was really nice.
Thirty years as your crossing guard as you did run.
Yeah, we had one that was thirty years, one that was fifteen. So. I'm sure there's plenty in between those, but those are the two that were, and then a lot of fives. So it's good to see we're getting the new staff too. And they did say that the pay increase helped them get up to their numbers. Because they only had thirty out of the sixty at first, and then when the pay increase was announced, they ended up with sixty of sixty. So. That was good as well.
Folks, the flow, uh, I would love to do that, but uh to look at my schedule, it's July four and July twenty fourth. I will be here, yeah.
Okay, thank you. Hey. All right, was there anything on the strategic discussion list that anybody wanted to bring up tonight? Or do you want to come prepared next week to bring something up? If there's something that you are looking for that's not finished off? Or you need more information? Do you want to look at those and bring those back next week? Okay, and then review the agenda for special municipal. Building Authority meeting on June thirteenth. Mr. Johnson?
Thanks, ma'am.
This is the same lease agreement that's being considered by the city council. Um, it's just that a portion of the property that will be leased is actually owned by the municipal building authority, very small piece, but.
So where's that piece at?
Um, it's uh, well. I don't know if we have the graphic up, but it's basically where the dumpster is in our parking lot.
Okay.
That's where the piece is.
Okay.
So. And the dumpster will be rebuilt by UTA and relocated.
Okay, that'll be relocated?
Yeah.
Okay.
The dumpster enclosure.
All right, any questions? Seems like a tough one. Hey, thanks, Dan.
Thank you.
All right, do we have a need for a closed session?
Ma'am.
And we just have one more action item?
Most enjoyed it.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And we are adjourned. Thank you.
See you in an hour.